The time is now 2:02. Good afternoon. We want to welcome you and thank you for joining us here on February 6th for the Special Policy and Governance Committee meeting. I am Dr. Felton Moss, Committee Chair and District 7 Board Member. For those of you who are unable to observe the meeting, it's being recorded and can be assessed on the PGCPS YouTube channel for later viewing. I want to inform the public that this meeting was called to receive critical legislative updates and to engage experts around legislative matters, in particular, a number of Senate bills we want to look at today. Ms. Adle, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Moss?
Present.
Mr. Briggs?
Present.
Ms. Boozer Struthers?
Present.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Jackson? We have four present. We have a call.
Thank you so much. With a call and present, the Policy and Governance Committee will come to order. At this time, there are no registered speakers for public comment, so we will move to our core item for today, which is the legislative update. Just so board members and committee members are aware, I will recognize Ms. Welsh to talk about the Senate bill first. And then I have invited two individuals who offer expertise around these measures and how the blueprint and the Senate bill will impact our work. Chief Howell has joined us and forever Board Member Dr. Alvin Thornton has joined us for today's conversation. So but we, the chair is going to recognize Ms. Welsh at this time, and then I'll, then I will recognize those particular individuals for expert testimony about the impacts of the legislative matter. Ms. Welch?
Good afternoon. I thought I would just briefly go through, give you a sort of a summary of the major components of this bill, and then from there, we will get the experts' opinion of what the impact might be. First of all, in terms of the funding changes in the, and this is a education, excellent educations, Maryland Public Schools Act and Senate Bill 429, and first of all, the foundation funding, which is our pupil, per pupil amount that we receive, we were supposed to be receiving $9,063 for the upcoming school year 2026, and instead now it's only going to be 9,226, which means that there will only be a 3.11% increase versus a 4.97% increase for the upcoming school year. And this is important only, I mean, it's important because we're not getting as much as was originally promised to us, but also the fact that this past school year, we had one of the lowest per pupil increases in the blueprint implementation than what we've had in previous years. It was only 1.7%. And then in terms of, the blueprint has a whole section on providing collaborative time and planning for teachers, especially new teachers, and the whole idea is that, there's a lot of research out there that shows that teachers who get to collaborate together, work together, that their building, their teaching skills become even better, both in terms of their knowledge base about what they're teaching, as well as the actual skills that they demonstrate in the classroom, and how important that is, as well as it also adds to job satisfaction so that we are able to retain the teachers that we have, because that's always an ongoing problem. And so we, they were supposed to begin, again, a per pupil amount that would start in 2026 at $163 per pupil, and this, this money would be going towards this collaborative time, because if teachers are collaborating, then that means you need to hire more teachers to make up the difference for what they're doing when they're collaborating. So we're supposed to get, receive $163 in 2026, and then 334, each year it would increase more, and they have now delayed that to 2030, so they've put it off by four years. And then as far as the concentration in the poverty community schools grant, they have basically paused any increase in the per pupil grant for eligible COP community schools for FY '27 and '28. So we'll see the increase next, this upcoming year, but then for next two years after that, we will not receive any increase. And then the other thing is that they will alter the special education per pupil amount starting in FY '26. The law right now talks about percentage increases, and instead they, by starting in FY '26, they're just going to have a set rate. They will set the rate for what the increase will be, which will definitely impact us there. So those were the funding one, the important things related to funding, I think, but Lisa might, oh, certainly correct me when you go, when she talks. But the other pieces, then the concentration of poverty grants in the community schools, they're now shifting all the oversight responsibilities over to MSD and changing a use of, and change, and which changes the use of local administrative funds. So they're moving a lot of money to MSD versus where we would have had it locally to do the kinds of things we were supposed to do. And the MSD is supposed to be conducting an evaluation of all our community school, the community school programs by, and I come up with a report by December 2028. They did expand the definition of wraparound services by community schools, which is critical because it says to include anything identified by MSD in guidance or regulation. So right this moment, there are things that each year could be added on as wraparound services that we don't know about. Then they also are authorizing MSD to hire additional employees in their community school office to provide direct guidance and direction to local school systems. So again, because they're putting the oversight administrative responsibilities with MSD, they're also in giving more money to MSD so they can hire additional staff to do those jobs. And then they are also authorizing MSD to issue requirements for community schools implementation plans and require implementation plans to include measurable goals, and that the goals must be reviewed annually instead of every three years, because right now, if you look at the, what's done, it's in every three-year site, it's a three-year cycle of when they do the review, and it says if the plans fail to meet the department's guidance, MSD is authorized to withhold funding. So they could take funding away if we did, if the, each of the schools didn't do what they needed to do, or withhold funding, or take other compliance actions against the school system. Then in terms, again, back to collaborative time leadership and teacher preparation and licensure. So in this particular area, they put a tremendous amount, they have shifted, appears anyway, to shift the funds over to MSD, and MSD will be providing many of these different things. So first of all, they're, instead of just giving us the money upfront, they're going to develop a collaborative time grant program for FY '26 to FY '29, and will then over, will have to do with each school system being able to provide innovative teacher collaboration models. And if you meet whatever the requirements are for this, you can then receive the grant, which you can then use for compensation for additional staff, planning of new master schedules, professional development, technical assistance, and other uses. But to be eligible for the grant, this, each school system must have their local employee organization, so that would be PGCEA, sign off on the application for the grant. And then it also, it alters the blueprint leadership training to include Maryland School Leadership Academy. And this is another area where they're going to be putting in a tremendous amount of funding too, I guess, MSD to offer that leadership academy, of which then they will, you know, be providing a lot of professional development. It also authorizes MSD to implement a national teacher recruitment campaign to include incentive grants to import teachers. And then it also will, which I did share about the, oh, delays implementation of collaborative time requirements in career ladders to start in FY '30 instead of FY '26. And then it also develops an academic excellence program and fund. And the purpose would be professional development, teachers through the use of coordinators of professional learning instructional coaches managed by MSD. And from what I, best I can tell, what would happen is the funding will actually go to MSD for them to hire teachers who they will end up, they will be, end up being instructional coaches or coordinators of professional learning, and those teachers will then go out into our public schools and do training of our, our teachers. And the chances are where they'll get their teachers from will be from our public schools, because where else would they get them? So we'll be competing against MSD to, for teachers, to recruit teachers. And I do think it puts the possibility out there that we could lose some of our best teachers, or better teachers at least, you know, as they, because I'm not sure what the criteria will be to be one of these coaches, but I would think that would be a likely hood. And then they're going to make changes to the Grow Your Own Educator Program, and they're also going to, the bill would require MSD to hire a consultant to review teacher preparation and licensure programs and make changes to collaborative grants, and then implements the Interstate Teacher Mobility Compact. That piece is positive because it's opening up flexibility for us to be able to hire teachers to come in from other states, and they do not have to jump through major hoops in order to meet the certification requirements because they were already certified in the states they're coming from. So it does, that does open the door up for recruitment. But this whole area where it has to do with the academic excellence program and fund, it appears, at least from outsider's view looking in, that many of these funds that were originally supposed to be going to the schools, it seems like they might be moved over to MSD to develop their own programs, which then they will use those programs to support the school system. So it's sort of like taking all the local piece out of it and make, putting it at the state level. And then it also required, the bill also requires MSD and AIB to contract with an independent consultant to study special education. And they're supposed to begin this study by January 1, 2026, with a report due December 2026. So that's, I think those are the major points, but I will also leave it to Lisa to, to add in anything or change, you know, provide any feedback or ideas, or she knows I know much more, and I know that the finance officers have been meeting, you know, with a lot of different groups. It's, it's a very hot topic right now across the state, so that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Robin. Our next order of business will be to bring Chief Howell, and then we'll bring Dr. Thornton in for, for a larger view of this. But I do want to see if any of my colleagues have a round of questions for Robin before we proceed to the experts. I think we can take a round of questions here if we need clarifications or anything. Any board members with questions? Board Member Boozer Struthers?
Yeah, well, I, I just want to say I certainly have questions, but I do feel like all, I would prefer the context from all three speakers before I ask my questions.
Absolutely. If none of my colleagues have questions for Ms. Welsh, we will now move to and recognize Chief Howell for presentation or some reflections. I know you've been doing this a good bit, and I just want to publicly acknowledge that you are jumping between meetings. And so I appreciate you making the time to be here today, Chief Howell, but the floor is now yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So this bill has a lot packed in it, and Robin has done an excellent job in providing an overview. We have still been working through modeling out the impact of this, not only for this year, which is what's immediately in front of us, but we want to see what this is going to look like for the out years. So we'll start off first with the impact in changing the, or pausing when the collaborative planning funding is supposed to roll into the blueprint. So right now, in our foundation funding that we receive, it's inclusive of covering many different aspects of the work that we're doing, higher salaries, technology, maintenance, et cetera. Collaborative planning was supposed to be an additional component within the foundation that was to be in effect for fiscal year 2026. The way our funding formulas currently work, foundation is the basis where we receive a per pupil amount for every single eligible student in the district. In addition to that, we receive targeted funding that's based off of the foundation. So for multilingual learners, compensatory education, special education, and I'm drawing a blank right now. There's another one, but, but they're targeted, they're tied, their benchmark off of the foundation per pupil amount. So to the extent that the foundation amount goes up or down, it will impact the funding for ML, for COMPED, for special education accordingly. So with this proposed legislation, with delaying the impact of collaborative planning rolling in of $163, that's lowering that foundation amount. It's also having a corresponding impact to ML and COMPED. Special education in its proposed legislation would be held harmless to that reduction. So it would impact COMPED, and it would impact ML, it would also have an impact on CWI. So when we did the calculation of this adjustment for 2026 with foundation, CWI, ML, COMPED, that impact to us is lower revenue of $22 million. And that is relative to current legislation as it stands now. So when the governor releases budget, and we've been able to confirm all of our wealth data, confirm all of our student count data, and we were able to revalidate what the requested revenue would look like, which wasn't too far off from our proposed. But once we're able to validate that, we're now benchmarking the impact of this changed legislation to what it would be based off of the law as it currently stands now. It's a loss in unrestricted revenue, state and county, because there's a state share, and there's a local share of $22 million for us. As, as many of you know, not all districts are created equal. Some of our districts are funded at the local level based off of the greater of maintenance of effort or a local share of the blueprint programs. So each county is facing a different impact with this proposed legislation. Some may lose the state funding, but they have their own battle with regards to how they're going to be funded with maintenance of effort. But other districts such as Prince George's County were impacted by the loss of state and at the local share as well. So I'm going to pause right there with regards to the unrestricted side of it before we move over to talk about the concentration of poverty. Any questions around the collaborative planning component?
Looks like Board Member Walker has her hand up, but just for the general public who watches this, when she says COMPED, she's talking about our compensatory ED, and those categories she named was foundation, compensatory education, English learner, special education, comparable wage index, and pre-kindergarten. So just wanted to articulate those again for the general public. Board Member Walker?
Thank you so much. Thanks, Ms. Howell. So Ms. Howell, yesterday, the governor, in his stated estate address, talked about collaborative planning, I feel like he did. It was, was it collaborative? Okay, sure. And what he said is that there's $500 million that's coming to the state of Maryland. And based on what I'm hearing right now, I was just wondering, and I know Prince George's County obviously doesn't get all of that money. We need to spread it out amongst everything, but I just was wondering in what I was hearing, are you saying that, because what he said is that he's going to increase it, but what does that look like for Prince George's County for state and local shares? Because I thought I heard you say that those actually are decreasing. So can you just help me understand? I'm just trying to get my head around it a little bit more. Thank you.
So right now, based off of the current proposed changes in the bill, collaborative planning is a component of foundation. The total foundation per people amount right now in current legislation is $9,226. With the pause in collaborative planning pushing it out from 2026 to 2030, there's going to be $163 that's going to be reduced from that per pupil amount. So the per pupil amount that we're getting for 2026 will be lower by that 163.
Okay, got it. So, because I just have a little bit more time, so just so I understand it. So right now, what you're saying is that this pause exists from 2026 to 2030, okay? So basically, we're, we should expect in 2030 to resume, okay? This is just my understanding. So now in 2026, 27, 28, and 29, what we're seeing is a reduction in the hundred-plus dollars that you said. Is that year upon year that we'll see?
Well, the amount for '26 was $163, but it is an escalating amount that's increasing for the subsequent years. So for example, fiscal year '27, that per people amount was supposed to be $334.
Got it.
'28 was $512, so it's increasing every single year. So it's not just a reduction. I was just giving you the example for that one year only.
No, that's perfect. Okay, thank you so much.
Are there any other board members with questions for Chief Howell before she continues?
So moving on with concentration of poverty. So that one is a little bit different. So we account for that as part of our restricted funds. They're used for that specific purpose to support community schools. There's two different grants. We receive a personnel grant and a per people grant. That personnel grant goes towards hiring a community school coordinator for that school. It also covers a health practitioner. And then we also have the flexibility in current legislation, the way it's written now, that if you have more than 40 community schools, you can develop a plan with the participating community schools to leverage 50% of those funds towards services that's on behalf of those schools. So it could support mental health supports or other wraparound services. So that's the personnel grant, and then there's the per pupil grant. And that is funding that will be based off of a needs assessment that's completed by the community school coordinator, and usually it's ramped up on a scaled basis. And so typically, the way that it works is once you become a community school, in that first year, you receive the personnel grant. That community school coordinator is then hired, and they work with that community school and that community to develop an assessment plan. The subsequent year, then, you receive the per pupil grant to support the work associated with that needs assessment plan. So one of the changes with this proposed legislation is that that per pupil grant for new community schools will be on pause for the next two fiscal years. So for fiscal year 2026, we have 19 new community schools. Out of those 19 new community schools, there's certain poverty thresholds that would determine whether or not you're eligible for the per pupil grant. So out of those 19 new schools, 11 have met that threshold to also be eligible for a per pupil grant in the next fiscal year, fiscal year 2027. But based off of the current proposed legislation, those 11 schools would not receive the per pupil grant for fiscal year '27 or '28. They would not get it until fiscal year 2029. So it's paused for those two years in between.
Do board members have questions for Chief Howell around this? I know she's, she's pausing around the community schools element of it. I just want to see if any board members have questions. Board Member Boozer Struthers?
Yeah, thank you so much. I just want to make sure I'm clear about the 50%. In hearing what Ms. Welch said about MSD holding funds to make decisions with, from, from each of the districts, essentially setting up community schools with the funds that would have followed the student. Just want to make sure we're clear on the interpretation of, of what is happening here.
Yeah, and that's a good question. I know our team is still working through that analysis as well. Right now, the way the legislation is currently written, out of the personnel grant and the per pupil grant, if you have 40, a minimum of 40 community schools, you're able to develop a plan to utilize 50% of those funds towards services on behalf of those schools. There's a component of this proposed legislation which now drops down that threshold from 40 to 2.
And can you clarify that this 50, I mean, obviously PGCPS would be in that threshold. We have over 100 community schools and should have, should have grown, and those schools will be waiting for the supports that the students need. This, this 50%, does it, did that always exist in HB 1300, the Blueprint for Maryland's Future Law? Or is this a brand-new concept that the district? You're saying that the district makes a decision with 50% of the community schools' funds? Whereas before, what percentage could the district make decisions? Because the original concept of community schools' funding was to follow the student. So this has significant impacts on high concentration of poverty schools, especially those that are overcrowded, that would see a significant reduction in being able to serve the community, the community if these funds are being maintained by MSD. So I'm just trying to understand who has the funds.
It's my understanding, based off of, oh, it timed out. Can I continue going?
You can answer her question.
Okay. And we might be talking about two different aspects of the legislation. So we've been primarily focused on the change around the community schools that receive the per people or the personnel grant. The aspect that Robin spoke of earlier, that's an additional aspect of the legislation that we had not understood to be the case. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, and so we're still working our way through that. But the way that it currently is written and proposed for this particular aspect of it, right now, the current legislation allows for the district to work with the community schools to develop a plan to utilize 50% of those funds on behalf of the schools. So we're not using the funds at the district level. So as an example, right now, we have that in place for the personnel grant where we use a portion of those funds to provide mental health supports to the schools. So we're able to execute contracts at the district level to support those mental health clinicians going into those community schools. So rather than, you know, 110 community schools trying to develop their own contract with the mental health supports, we're doing that on their behalf, and that's part of that community school plan that's been developed. That's in current legislation, and in the proposed legislation, it's increasing that threshold from, or decreasing that threshold from a minimum of 40 schools down to two. So for the districts that had not as many community schools as us, that's a better benefit for them because now they're able to support the community schools in that same manner. The additional component that Robin is speaking of, that's not something that we've currently, or understand there's going to be an impact to the district where funding is going to be redirected from the community schools to MSD. But we may have missed that in our initial review. Again, we're still working through, there's a lot of components of this that we're still teasing that out. But the biggest change for us relating to the legislation for community schools is that pause for the two years in the per pupil grant for those new 11 schools to be able to receive that funding beginning of fiscal year 2027. And maybe Robert can speak to it further, but that, that aspect of it is not something that we are currently tracking with.
I know Board Member Walker had a question. I want to make sure I get to her question, and then Robin, I see, I see your hand up here. If you want a clarification, we'll get it after Board Member Walker, if that's okay.
Thank you, because you might be able to add a little bit of clarity here too. And I appreciate we're all going through this together. So thank you both for coming on and really helping us through this. You know, as I think about District 9 and a lot, all the 11, because we have some of those new community schools as well here, I'm thinking about if we will consider, because we know that we are in a deficit, right? We knew that something was coming, and so we just need to work on what the solution's focus is going to be for ours in my mind. That's where my mind goes. So I'm just wondering if there will be any consideration of condensing or consolidating the community schools that do exist within the district. I don't know if you're able to do that because it follows the pupil per school. Okay, so you're already saying no? Okay, got it. And it's because it follows the pupil per school, so got it. That was my bright idea. That doesn't work. And I guess the other piece that I just was wondering is, were these grants the sole contributing factor to the schools? So for instance, this is what I think I heard you say. We have 19 new community schools, 11 of them met the threshold, but we recognize that we're not going to get any additional funding because of the pause until 2029. Therefore, what, is that true so far?
So let me just clarify. They have a personnel grant and a per people grant. They will get their personnel grant in '26, and they will continue to get that personnel grant in '26. They will get their personnel grant in twenty six, and they will continue to get that personnel grant in twenty six, twenty seven, and beyond.
Yes.
What would normally have followed is they would have also received the per people grant beginning of fiscal year twenty seven. And so out of those nineteen schools, eleven are eligible because they meet the poverty threshold to receive the per people grant. Those eleven schools will not get that per people grant. It won't kick in until fiscal year twenty nine.
Okay, so I think, you know, after things have shaken up a little bit, maybe what we could do is see what the impact is per the schools. So we really understand what that is, because maybe they're not. Maybe we're going to be okay for the time being during a pause. So really understanding what the impact is per school will be great. Like, what can't they get as a result? What wraparound services will they not have as a result of this pause, you know, when we did?
I mean, that's absolutely lost funding that they won't be able to receive. So they'll have that community school coordinator, but they won't have those funds for those two years. Now, the community schools that already exist for fiscal year twenty five that are also per people that receive the per people grant, they're going to continue to receive their per people grant on a going forward basis, but it's the new ones that won't receive that grant funding.
Yeah, I just don't know if that means we can't give coats out, we can't give food out, they won't have blankets. I don't know what that means. Like, what does that tangibly mean?
Yeah, well, each school develops their own needs assessment. So what one school may do with their per people grant may look different than what a different school does with their per people grant. So it's not that they all get the exact same thing with their resources. They develop a plan based off of the specific needs that are unique to that school.
I appreciate you answering that question. Sounds like our bottom line here is that we have about eleven schools that will be able to have somebody doing community schools work, but they won't have any dollars to do the work going forward. So whatever that work is, it seems like a tremendous impact. Are there any board members that have questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Welsh. I was not intended to overlook you. My apologies. I know you wanted to clarify something.
Yes, I did. I was, and now I got distracted because of your question, and I was thinking about, I'm thinking about that in terms of what that impact would be. The question, the interpretation, I think I maybe wasn't very clear. So it, what's really what's happening is by pausing the expansion of the grant, of the grants for the per pupil amount for those two years, that will save the state about four hundred seventy three million dollars over the original blueprint of what the estimate had been. And then, but they'll still put about two point one three billion statewide into the program. But because they'll have that extra money, there's, there's, well, I don't, I shouldn't say because, I'm not, I shouldn't make that link. So they're going to have this extra four hundred seventy three million they're not spending. However, the programmatic changes that are, they're going to invest in where MSD now is going to be supposedly providing supports, reviewing and assessing their, their, that, each school's data, making sure they're doing what they, what they are supposed to be doing. That actually, well, that, that's, they're going to, this bill allows eight point two million dollars over a four-year period to go into MSD's resources to be able to do that work. So if you think about it, I'm just making a connection for you. It doesn't say that in the bill. But the, their money is not going to the local schools. It's going to MSD to do some of the same things that we were doing originally responsible for at the, at the system level. That the MSD will do it, and they evidently, their oversight will then be pretty critical because of the fact that if they want to, they can actually, they don't think their schools meeting the criteria that's been set, they can, they can pull funds. So that, that's, that's pretty serious oversight, you know? Your funding's at risk for not doing what you're supposed to do. Not to say that we're not, you know, not in favor of compliance, because absolutely we're in favor of compliance and do what you need to do, but it, but there is that relationship there.
Yeah, I want to bring, I know Board Member Briggs has a question. Chief Howell, I want to be hyper cognizant that you have two meetings. And so I want to ask board members to make sure we have questions specifically for Chief Howell. And then Dr. Thornton will come in and give us another view on this holistically. But if you've got questions, please jump back in. I'll entertain another round before she goes. Board Member Briggs.
So I don't actually know if this is appropriate, because this isn't really what you just requested a question, but it's a statement to Mrs. Howell. Because I wanted to just, one, I wanted to lift up for everybody that Strong Schools Maryland actually released a really good visual on the impact of the decrease in collaborative time funding, the impact that it's going to have on schools across the years until they reestablish the funding. And I think that if we had some way to really, I feel like this discussion is about when we go to Annapolis, when we're, you know, pushing this for our elected officials, they need to understand, I think, the very real essential question that Board Member Walker asked, which is like, how does this impact our schools? How does this impact our students? What does this look like? And I feel like that's the piece that, I love the idea that, that Chief Howell mentioned around like the twenty two million, because I think that figure is very clear. But if there are some other things, too, if we're thinking about like even that one hundred and sixty three that'll eventually compound to larger and larger amounts, what impact will that have over the amount of time that we'll be looking at our most vulnerable students, our students that are most high risk and most in need, not getting the essential resources that they need while we're also still navigating this deficit? And I guess the question I have for you, Chief Howell, was too, how does this align with the? Because right now, we have a forty two million deficit. I know we probably projected out a potential possibility of not getting funding next year, of course, with the sun setting of the federal funds. So I'm curious, with that twenty two million, is that in addition to, or is that just the projected amount overall with, with those things, those caveats?
Yeah, so two things. Number one, with regards to your first statement, we do have a high level projection. Again, we're still sort of validating and confirming the impact of this pause and what it's going to mean over, you know, the next, you know, ten, you know, through twenty thirty three. And for us, we're looking at a loss of north of a billion dollars between the impact on ML, COMPED, and the foundation over that timeframe. So again, we're still validating and doing our own calculations, but it's around a billion dollars, a little bit more than a billion dollars. So we do have kind of that broader insight of what this actually means over the long term, not just fiscal year twenty six, which is what we're planning for right now. But to answer your second question around, I'm sorry, I just had a brain freeze. What was?
Twenty two million, is that like the projected?
So the twenty two million for twenty six, that is in addition to the impact of our current budget, which has a deficit of thirty five million. So I mean, when you think about the loss of funding for foundation in addition to COMPED, in addition to ML, at least seventy five percent of that funding goes to the schools. So with that kind of reduction, it has a direct impact on schools. There's, there's no way around it. And so when you have that kind of a change, the foundation is used for, you know, staffing our school buildings and maintenance and all the things, along with ML, along with compensatory education. So there's going to be a direct impact to the resources that will be allocated to the schools. What that's going to mean, how that's going to look, it will vary, it will differ by school. But you can't have that kind of a change without it having an impact across the district at the school level.
Thank you, Chief Howell. I know Board Member Boozer Struthers' hand is up, and I want to make sure we bring you in.
Oh, thank you. I was just going to go to that point of the total dollar amount over the years, because even if you just use today's student enrollment and, and do quick math, you get up to at least six hundred and thirty four million over the eight years. But the, what you, what you described is we get up to the billion because every, every year, the amount is lowered, which means it's residual into the other categories. And so we are expected to implement the Blueprint for Maryland's Future with a billion less dollars than projected by the Kerwin Commission. And I think that's like basically what we need to implore our legislators to understand that their expectations of the, the blueprint are now, we're being asked to meet that by the billion. And I know Dr. Thornton is going to describe this in detail. But I mean, this is, it's absolutely untenable. And I think what's going to happen for us here in PG CPS, this has wiped out, this has the risk of wiping out our, the hard work we've done around equity and that there's going to be the equal equity debates again, which schools have the funding, which students, because we're going to be under this tremendous financial strain. And I don't think any of us want to lower the expectations. I think many of us believe in the five pillars and how they work together. But it is untenable to think that we can do these five pillars with a billion less dollars over the next eight years. So I just want to make sure that we're mindful of that we're being set up to be fighting internally again in what we've worked so hard to stop doing. So those are my big concerns.
Appreciate you. From Boozer Struthers, I want to allow Chief Howell to give some final remarks so that she, she can get out. So do you want to offer some final remarks so that we can get you to your next base?
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I, I think one of the challenges with the implementation of the blueprint goes to her point of having equitable funding at all of our schools. And it is an implementation, so it's not expected to happen in year one. And right now, the policy allows for us to be able to ramp into this process where we're getting our schools at that seventy five percent minimum threshold. You now, you know, do a haircut in that funding. It makes that reallocation exercise that much more complicated to ensure the funds are being equitably distributed amongst all of our schools. So it's one thing if we were already there, but we're barely in year two of being able to begin to phase this into practice. And so now it just puts all of that in question about how do you do that with fidelity to ensure that you're still on track to meet that minimum seventy five percent threshold within the next two years? So a lot of challenges to come. We have a lot of fixed costs that's tied to this change here, right? We have, we are, as all districts are, we have our labor partners, we have negotiated agreements which have been settled or in the process of being negotiated based off of what we understood was outlined in the legislation. So to make this kind of a change is, is going to have a fundamental impact on the structure of our budget for the district, not just for this year, but for several years to come.
Well, Chief Howell, we appreciate your labor. We know this work isn't easy in turbulent times. But we appreciate you offering your expertise. And I know our board, my colleagues will reach out if they have more defined questions, but we appreciate you leaving your meeting and coming to this one to make sure the general public can understand the financial impact. But I, I don't think we have anything else for you, and you have to go. So thank you so much, and have a good day.
Thank you, you too.
At this time, we'll bring our forever board member, Dr. Alvin Thornton, who is no stranger to this board, no stranger to our community, who has been a lone fighter. Board Member Walker, did you have something? Okay, I thought you were saying, but at this time, I want to make sure you, you have the time and space to, to present and offer testimony for us. We just thank you for agreeing to this call. Board Member Boozer Struthers was like, we can't do this without Dr. Thornton. So we're excited to have you here today. So the floor is now yours.
I want to thank you and your colleagues for allowing me to join you in this, this space, a space that I've served in for many years. So I want to thank you all. You know, this is very important to me, and I call it the, the three Bs that we're dealing with. I was so happy to be able to hear Ms. Walsh and Chief, Chief, what did I get wrong? Chief Howell's testimony, because they really gave you the great details of what you all are facing. But equally important is the context, because you're speaking to the people of Prince George's County. And we have to do two things. We have to get into the minutia, the details, and the operational stuff that you all have to deal with. But we also have to empower the people to understand the context of what they're dealing with. And hopefully, the people will then speak to their legislative and senatorial leaders and the governor about the moment that we are in. And old heads like me, they need to share, right? I was listening to the discussion about the foundation amount, right? That's a very important concept that was stood up in the history of Maryland public education. And anything that destabilizes it, right, undermines it, for whatever reason, a momentary budget crisis or whatever, needs to be done with great care. Before nineteen ninety nine, there was no foundation concept in Maryland public education, right? This concept, which says that in order to pursue the obligations of Article Eight of our Constitution, that every student needed a foundation amount. That's a very recent concept, which we shouldn't play around with, and we shouldn't easily allow it to be deconstructed because of a momentary budget crisis, which must be dealt with. So people will reduce it by a hundred and sixty dollars and just say we'll reduce it, right? No, it took decades to come to the notion that every child, notwithstanding their proximity to wealth, notwithstanding their proximity to valuable property and income of home, notwithstanding the county in which they live, need a, need a foundation amount. That came out of the Bridge to Excellence concept. Because before that, you just had the politics of who's most powerful and what county is most powerful, and what county has the most senators or the most delegates. What county, before that, you had fifty different buckets into which we docked of education money for our children. There was no such concept as a foundation amount. So let's, to the people and to you all, let's be very protective of the foundation concept. The foundation concept said that this is what you need to adequately and equitably fund the education of our children, no matter the county in which they live, because Article Eight does not speak to a county. Right? It doesn't speak to a city. It speaks to children. So I'm most protective of this notion of the foundation amount. We, we clearly, this is politics, we all understand that. And as I always say, when I go to Annapolis, to the legislators, and now to the governor, make the right decision and the people will have your back. And the right decision is to make sure that our children's education is adequately and equitably funded in order to achieve the high nationally high performance expectations that we have of them. Those decisions are very difficult, but we know the equalizing results of excellent education. We know what happens when we don't adequately fund it. So make the right political decisions. Sometimes we have to march to keep the promise, as you know, right? When we did Thornton, which we call Bridge to Excellence, we went through exactly what you all are going through now. There's nothing new about this. People don't do right necessarily unless they have the support of the public, informed the public. We did Bridge to Excellence, where we create the foundation amount, create the compensatory categories from poverty to limiting proficiency in special ed. Those were all new concepts. We didn't even have classifications where we felt an obligation to educate our children as they presented themselves to us in different categories. We've stood that up, and I'm asking this community, the board, the people, the politicians, let's protect that. Let's, let's, the biggest mistake we can make is to deconstruct the blueprint framework, structure. And it's the statutory connection to the constitutional requirement for our children in pursuit of meeting a budget crisis. And that budget crisis, there, my own personal view is that we can do more to have fair share in terms of funding public education. We are not doing what we should do in terms of taxing those who have and corporate responsibility and wealthy people's responsibilities. That's a whole nother discussion. I hope leave that there, right? But we are not doing, and that's soaking down into our school systems. And so we must, we must deal with that. I, I saw what happens when you properly fund public education. We saw it. We had in nineteen, in two thousand and two, when we did the Bridge to Excellence and Maryland went to nationally high number one rankings, and we were celebrated in all national publications as a model. It was a very revolutionary thing. And after we backed off of that in the same way that I'm seeing signs of now, right? We backed away from that. And then we went back to what we were doing prior to the Bridge to Excellence, segmenting ourselves into eastern shore counties, into counties that are more Republican, into counties that are less diverse. And you know what happens when that happens. It happens what you're seeing right now. And that is, that is a situation that we have, we did not recover from. The blueprint allows, allowed us to recover from that. Several years of intense development of a consensus around what's required to educate our children. The blueprint needs to be protected as a result of that. You don't easily create consensus around the education of children that cuts across geography, race, and the education of children that cuts across geography, race and class. That is a very difficult thing to develop. Once you get it, let's be protective of it. Now, I do not think personally that we should allow politicians, elected officials have operational responsibilities you all do. Less so because you don't raise any money. So you have no power to raise a dime. But others have a responsibility to not deconstruct a consensus once you get it. So once we got that blueprint consensus, and it was a fight, as you know, those who opposed it before it was passed are now coming out of the gate to oppose it again for the reasons that have nothing to do with the budget crisis. They do not believe in the equalizing dimension of the blueprint. They don't believe in its premise. They don't believe in its essential role in meeting Article Eight obligations of our state. And they are out in gangbusters. We should do nothing to empower that initiative that is coming after us. I do believe, and I'll be quiet, that we need to look at in terms of advocacy, the fair share proposals that are coming forward. We need, we need new revenue. Locally, we need to look at ourselves. This is heavy politics I'm saying now. We need to look at ourselves locally and see what we are doing locally to not properly provide the resources for our children. We have accepted the premise that we are doing all that we can do to provide the resources for our children. That is not true. Some of us can do more and we're not doing it. I know that's difficult, especially for those who are running for office, right? But there are some of us, in terms of the local share, because part of what you are describing is going to do what? It's going to revolve down to what Prince George's County can afford. And we have, ever since nineteen seventy-eight, we have started to disinvest in the education of our children's education. And it's a structural issue now. It's a mindset issue now. It's a part of our politics. We just accept it. And so people like me who can do more, I'm an example of who can do more. People like me are not doing more. We're running away from our obligation. The first thing that people said to me when the governor created the Bridge to Excellence Commission, where they said to me, Dr. Thornton, why are you sitting here asking me for more resources when you won't provide it yourself? That's what they said to me. And that's what people are going to say to us now as we try to provide resources for the blueprint, which is going to require us standing up, giving our, our share of what we should to our children, of making sure that the sixty-five percent or so of children that are low income and, and we only have maybe twenty-five percent of the or so of homes that have children in our public schools, that we can stop the stampede away from public education, right? Which is what is happening. And so when we try to get the politics, we say to our senators and delegates, do not allow the blueprint to be deconstructed, underfunded. There's less power to do that because the whole concept of the equalization of public education and our obligation to fund it has in fact been deconstructed. We did it before, my colleagues, we will do it again. Now, when Thornton dropped in nineteen ninety-nine, you'll remember, we had a four hundred million dollar deficit and people were going to use it as an excuse. We had strong legislators who stood up and funded it. They stood up, nothing different. And then when people wanted to severely cut the Bridge to Excellence program, the people came together, went to Annapolis and said, do not, they cut it somewhat, right? But they didn't cut it to the level that I'm seeing proposed here. We must not allow this to happen. And for those who want to use public education as a political statement, the best political statement they can make is to do what? Is to fund the blueprint adequately and use it as a national model of what we do for our children.
Thank you so much, Dr. Thornton, for your, your deep reflections and your testimony. I want to extend it to my colleagues to ask follow-up questions or use the balance of their time. I think we have time for at least two rounds of questions. If not another round, but I know we do have time for two rounds. So I'll start with whichever of my colleagues want to go first. I'll actually start with a question. One of my parents actually wanted to know the, the true impact of, you know, there's a message out there that we're cutting taxes, Dr. Thornton. And, and we're raising taxes on the wealthy, but it doesn't seem to be translating to our kids, which is one of our most precious commodities. You know, how do we talk to parents about this language, this political rhetoric that's out there? That, you know, we're lowering taxes, but at the same time, we're decreasing the revenue that you get to your schools. Parents are really contending with that. They're hearing this notion that, oh, my taxes might be lower for, you know, at least thirty-five percent of Marylanders, eighty-five percent, there won't be any change. I got that question. How do parents grapple with that? Or what would you say to them as that rhetoric has been?
The most hurtful thing for me as a fifty-some-odd-year resident of this county is how the people of Prince George's County has been played with when it comes to the question of taxation. And the end result of it is the unwillingness to fund the public sector. Whether it's healthcare, whether it's police, but primarily schools. And so we give the impression that we are spending all this money on public education. You see, in nineteen seventy-eight, the people of Prince George's County, which was not diverse at that time, decided that they were not going to fund the public sector. They made that decision when the school system was not ninety-five percent non-white as it is now. It was not Latino, Latina, and it was not black, and it was not low income. And they made that decision by passing a law was insulated wealth from the public sector. This is after the Brown versus Board of Education decision in fifty-four and then the nineteen seventy-two decision which ordered the desegregation of public schools. People said that the population was going to disperse away from Prince George's County. It was going to become more diverse and the public sector would not be funded. It's called TRIM. The average person who comes to you all about public education, they don't know anything about TRIM. They don't know the history. What they know is the taxes are too high in their mind, right? They don't know how this thing of no building schools after seventy-eight for twenty years, not one school being built, results in your schools being an average age of fifty or so years, right? That it doesn't change into the federal government. And I was sitting right there with Judge McSeti in green belt, where it says that you all are not willing to fund your schools because you got TRIM. You tried to change it politically. No one will change it. Why? Because students don't vote and most of the homes from which they come, the parents don't vote. They don't vote. So you don't have to deal with that, okay? I will make you do it as a result of, if you want to end busing, I'll make you do it. You will build schools. This is where wise comes from, you know? This is where flowers comes from. This is core rice. This is what, it wasn't the politics that did that. It was the advocacy of the parents, right? And then when we got the Bridge to Excellence, which is where the concept of foundation comes from, which is where the special categories that we talked about, poverty, limited English proficiency, all that came from, that came from litigation. The Bradford cases of Baltimore. And it came into Prince George's County. It was, the governor looked up, who was personally denning and said, look, if I don't do something, the federal courts are going to do exactly to me what was done to what? To Prince George's in nineteen ninety-eight when we had the settlement of the case. So you've always have to have this pressure. And now we're at a point where the people are feeling rightfully so, that they're being overtaxed, right? One of the reasons they're being overtaxed is because those who should be paying are not paying. So everything rolls downhill, okay? Bro, I left the Board of Education just to personalize it for a minute. I left the Board of Education in nineteen ninety-nine, December. And I left the board after serving chair for three terms because I knew that as long as there was what I call a creating of education within municipalities or what we call counties. And you would put babies in counties because the Constitution of Maryland does not mention counties. You won't find counties, the name of counties in the Constitution of Maryland. You find counties in what? In the statute. The General Assembly creates counties. And what we did was we said we're going to put babies in counties. White folk in Somerset and Allegheny, black folk in Baltimore, Prince George's. We're going to create different economic groupings and then we're going to allow education to be funded as an extension of what? The economic realities of those communities. That's what you're dealing with. Now, what, what, what I said was that's not going to work, especially for Prince George's County. Because it's becoming what? Less diverse, lower income and the TRIM phenomenon had just grabbed us by the neck. We couldn't spend virtually anything to support our children. And I said, we, we need a state solution. That's when I resigned from the board and went to the state and chaired that commission. And the first thing the commission said was that what? You must attach the performance expectations that you have for the children, which is some of the highest in the nation. That's the first thing you got to realize. What you're chasing after, some of the highest, it's not like Mississippi, Alabama, or whatever, Texas or Florida. This is Maryland, some of the highest in the nation. You must attach those performance expectations to what? Resourcing that is equally statutorily based. See, there was nothing statutorily based about resourcing. It was about politics. You go to Annapolis, you have fifty buckets and the most powerful people would do what? Pull out the bucket and send it back and then come back and brag about how much money. It had nothing to do with performance statutory connectivity. Now the bridge did it and the blueprint doesn't. So when you begin to pull back money for community schools or teacher training, professional development, I call it, when you begin to pull that money back, the next question you have to ask is, how does that relate to what? The performance possibility or the performance that you have? You can't change one without the other. And if you do, it's not politically, it's morally wrong, politically unwise. It makes no sense in terms of education. If you change one, if you reduce the funding in the way that we're talking about, you must change the performance expectation. That's what you must tell the people of Maryland. And if you don't do that, which is what you all have to be careful about, because people will say, oh, I can reduce the money in the way that's been described by your colleagues, but I don't have to adjust the performance expectation. Why? Because they don't really need that money. It's just waste. They've just been wasting it. They didn't need it in the first place, right? That's what you have to not allow to happen because nobody wins that kind of narrative. That kind of waste and mismanagement. And that's the reason it is not the budget cuts. Stay away from that. Nobody wins. That's a losing battle for everybody, politicians as well as the board and our children.
Thank you again for answering my question. And, you know, one of the things I really appreciated, your explanation around, and do any of my colleagues have any questions? I want to make sure I make space for you all. Board Member Boozer Struthers.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much. And thank you, Dr. Thornton, for, you know, for giving us the history and history repeating itself in these moments we find ourselves in again. The one issue that, when it comes to talking to the, you know, to constituents, whether they have their parents or otherwise, is this issue of funding adequacy. And I mean, you definitely have touched on it around like disinvestment and the purpose of the Thornton Commission in Kerwin. But there's a piece of it that, that I find has been difficult to convey that PG CPS has never been at funding adequacy because of these state and county sources. Those are the sources and then some federal. That we as a board cannot make taxing decisions to get to that adequacy. And we don't, we, once the budgets are determined for this board, it becomes a, you know, this limited pie issue that we continue to have every year. So I was wondering if you could discuss just a little more in depth of what those moments in time since the seventies meant when money flowed to Howard County and Montgomery County and how those districts have just never understood this funding issue, this under-resourced issue. Because I find myself fighting this all the time, that, that this is a reality, that we, just like school construction, that we're digging out of a deficit, it also plays out in the actual operating and academics.
Yes, we, we made a fundamental mistake in, in the state of Maryland in nineteen eighty-three when we said that wealth differences in terms of providing students' education is not a suspect classification, which can be adjudicated in court. Now, that's a very important principle. We have tried to politically deal with that because deal, understand what that means, right? That means that you can have poor, lower income white children in Somerset County and lower income white children in Allegheny County. And as a function of the homes in which they live and the communities, the value of the property around their homes, they can receive constitutionally acceptable what? Less money to educate their children. Now, anytime you adjust the foundation amount, which is the amount that all children get no matter what county they live in, you back into that conundrum I just described to you. Nobody wants that. We are one Maryland. You do not want that, what I call Somerset versus Hornbeck, that's the case. You don't want that principle to take root in our state. And if somehow the taxpayers and the people that you represent, Ms. Boozer Struthers, we must educate them about that principle because that's what we're playing with when we begin to unravel the foundation amount and we begin to disassociate adequacy. The concept of adequacy is not just something a board member comes up with adequate funding. No. It is a researched, documented, statistically-based determination of what it requires children to have in order to be educated at the level that we expect of them. It is not just a political kind of statement, right? Now, the moment that we begin to distance ourselves from a definition of adequacy, which we studied it, Augen Blick did it for us and did it for the blueprint over several years, and we come up with a definition of adequacy. And then we attach money amount to that. Any dollar that you move away, whether it's a hundred and sixty-three dollars or whatever, you're beginning to do what? Unravel that nexus. And you begin to hurt children. And I always say that when you do that, that is morally, politically, economically and politically unwise to do that. We must find a way to educate the public is the what I'm, what we're saying. Because if you don't, the public will easily say what? Especially a public that does not have children mostly in the public schools. Most people don't realize that, right? You know that. Many people are like me, old heads with no children in schools. Right? I got concerns. I can talk about you all, right? I can write emails about you. I don't have one child. I have four grandchildren in schools. Public schools educated my children well, but most homes are like mine. Right?
I just want to, I appreciate your reflections there as well. You talked a lot about education. So I'm going to recognize Board Member Walker, who's always going to talk about educate, advocate and act together. So.
You already knew. Listen, I already have a little question over here. I'm ready. I'm ready. Thank you so much, Dr. Thornton. I sincerely, sincerely appreciate you bringing the perspective. So, you know, we have been talking narratives as a board and how we, exactly what Dr. Felton already said, how we educate, advocate and act together. So how we educate ourselves, which is what we're doing right now with new information, our constituents, our legislators, how we then engage our parents and our constituents to advocate, right? This is the time. And then how we act together. And so my question is, can you just arm us with, you know, three things that you would say to our Board of Education as strategies on how to engage based on what you know, based on what you've done? You've talked to us about this bold leadership that you had at the time and how you were able to get some things moving. So we have a number of members that are new. We have a mix between parents and professionals. And so now is the time, we've done a great job at really working with our legislators and creating these amazing partnerships. And so this educate, advocate act is big and bold right now. This is the time. And we want to do that. So please help me with, you know, what are three strategies that you can think of that are actionable? That you would say, you know what, Board of Education, based on what I hear and based on what I know, this is what boldness looks like. And this is some recommendations I would have for you guys' consideration.
One of the bold things, my dear colleague, is what I'm seeing here today, what I see the board doing. And that is to be what, what I'm seeing, which is a collaborative, working together advocacy group on behalf of the children. The face of what we want to happen in terms of our children. So I want to thank you all for that. That is critically important because one of the ways, one of the best ways to undermine funding for public education is to question those to whom the funding is given. That's the easiest way to do that, okay? So the first thing is to not let that happen. The collegiality, the working together, the advocacy, collaborative advocacy is absolutely indispensable. So please. Uh the the collegiality, the working together, uh the advocacy, collaborative advocacy is absolutely indispensable, so please continue to do that. Uh the other way is to claim, um this will be difficult to do because it requires education. Claim this, the criticality, the the importance of what we are as Prince George's County. See, the notion of equity, the notion of adequacy comes out, comes from Prince George's, to some extent Baltimore City. So don't, don't give that away. Even in the midst of cuts and all these kinds of things, where the I that's why I call it the three Bs, right? The Brown concept of equal education for children notwithstanding race, the Bridge to Excellence concept, right? Statutory connectivity to its performance uh expectations and resourcing. Claim that historical space as you do your narration, right? And make sure people know that there is no shortcut to the economic future that we want for our state that does not go through public education. And then, or even though there may be auxiliary educational opportunities for our children, the core must be public education. Right? Because one of the strains that you all see being pulled away from you all is what? Private options and vouchers and other kinds of things. I call it middle-class frustration. That's what that is, right? Uh and it is, it is something that will take root, and it's took root starting in the nineteen nineties in Prince George's County. We must pull it back and say, even though those auxiliary options that the parents may exercise, they should not supplement the absolute core, which is public education. Because everything, residential housing value, commercial business development, perception of our place in the DMV, all of that centers around what? Public education, right? So we need that narrative. The friends that I talk to who have no case in the schools, right? They have a negative, many of them have a negative narrative. We must change that. And then we must do this. We must say that it is, at the at the end of the of the day, it is, it is unwise to not do right by children. Because, and that means funding their education adequately and supporting them, because you have no constitutional right to not do that. You understand what I'm saying to you? That's Bradford, that's Vons, that's people like us who say, just because politically you can do that, which means underfunding public education, you have no right to do it and you will not be allowed to do it. You know what that means, right? That we will not allow uh the state, as we did not do in nineteen ninety-eight. And and Vons did not do it in nineteen seventy-two, and Thurgood did not do it in nineteen fifty-four. We will not allow the requirements of Article Eight to be politically undermined. I don't think anybody wants that to happen. You understand what I'm saying? I don't think anybody wants Article Eight to be undermined just because people are not willing to share resources with children, but people will do that. So that third thing is to do what? Those are the the marches in Annapolis, the Blueprint Day in Annapolis type stuff I'm talking about, right? Where people look out of their offices and they see thousands of people. We didn't just get the bridge because people wanted it. They looked out of their offices and they saw thousands of people saying what? We have your back. Next time you come up for an election, we have your back. Here we are. This is, if you do right and fund fund the bridge and now fund the blueprint, do the fair share, we have your back. If you don't do that, then you will have what I just pray that will not happen. And that is that you will have people pulling back from the promise of the blueprint and not funding children's education and then narrating a negative narrative about about public education and blaming people like yourselves.
Thank you. Can I just recap what I think I heard for the bullets? Okay, I can come back on a second round. I have no problem doing it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just real quick, this is what I got. So thank you very much. That's good, because I can feel your passion where we are. I wrote down um continue our focus of Educate, Advocate, Act Together, because we're already on the right path of what it is we're doing. I heard collaboration. I heard unity. I heard uh bringing a message. The second really was owning our narrative by changing our narrative. Um and really talking about um not only our vision, but why is public education in PG CPS the best education? I'm summarizing. This is what I garnered from it. Why, but that story. And so we've been talking about owning this narrative and what it looks like, but really pushing out why PG CPS public education, why does public education is the best education, especially with everything going on? And then your last point on, you know, this notion of being unwise to unfund and underfund uh where we are and what that means, not only from the historical framework, but really from historical to where we are and framing that to these marches on Annapolis or the work that we're doing, but really being very clear and helping people understand what it really means. It's kind of like the questions we were asking to um um uh Ms. Howell, for instance. Those type of questions. What does it really mean to our scholars so that we can continue to educate? That's what I took away from the three, and um that's what I'm rolling with. Okay, thanks.
Very good, very good.
Well, it it doesn't appear that any of my colleagues have have more questions. Um board member Briggs and, well, vice chair Briggs, uh who is vice chair of our committee at large and also vice chair of the board. I wanna make sure we make. There you go.
Yeah.
I I don't, I don't have a comment. I don't wanna leave without just saying thank you for offering the, just, I think every time I've spoken to you, it's been a wealth of knowledge, and I think it's 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 integral to us moving forward. We have to know where we started and where we've been to know where we're headed um and how to get there. And so I feel like this is really helpful, because this offers some of that roadmap. Um and then hopefully some of those relationships that could really help to kind of cushion any blows that may be uh, you know, coming anyone's way. Um and and I don't think that'll be the case, but you know, I just wanna make sure that we have your partnership in those things. I want to say thank you um for for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh board member Boozer Struthers?
Yeah, thank you so much. So um Dr. Thornton, uh you know, when when we were together, when you were chair of this board and the work we did in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, you were um always very clear of your message to the delegates and senators of the Prince George's County um delegation and and your expectations of of how you would see them in this fight for our children. And if I were sitting there and seeing that there's a billion dollars being proposed to withdraw from from the school system, I certainly would be in the fight. Um so I'm wondering, you know, what you would say if you had the delegation of the the House and senators right here, what would be your message to them in this moment?
You've always had uh exemplar warriors who stood in the breach and defended public education. And when they did that, their colleagues were empowered by that. Uh in my day, it was people like Senator Barbara Hoffman uh and people like um uh who else? Barbara Hoffman, it comes to mind. Pete Rollins comes to mind. People who uh stood in the breach, you know, and did what was right, and then their colleagues rallied around them. So I would ask members of our senate delegation and I would ask the delegates and other local colleagues, uh use those models and stand in the breach. You, history will treat you well uh when you do that, uh when you say, hey, this is what we should do. There must be someone who leads, gives voice, be the the vanguard. Because, you know, public education is all over the places, being attacked nationally and and there's there's an organized effort to just what? Destroy it, basically. That's the other thing we haven't realized. It's an organized effort to destroy it in the the Department of Education, public education itself, uh because people don't le- believe in it. Um and then it's, so it's easy for local politics or state politics to simply ride on that bandwagon without knowing. So I would ask elected officials um to at least some of them, to become aggressive advocates around the narrative that we've been talking about today. Our fair share of resourcing for our children, maintaining the integrity of the blueprint and its funding adequacy, et cetera. And uh get get to doing the hard work as to do what? As to how you're gonna raise the resources to make sure it's fully funded.
Well, thank you so much, um Dr. Thornton. Um and I I can't thank you enough. I echo the same sentiments that board member Briggs shared with you. I will never forget um my false proclivity to believe that sixty-two percent of this county's budget actually goes to public education and your deconstruction of that, um which just shifted my accepted wisdom on the reality of funding in our county. And so, as much as.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but I'm 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 glad you have uh and your colleagues. We need to get that word out. That's.
And and when you explained it to me, it just changed my accepted wisdom of so much. And so anytime I get to talk to somebody and someone says it, um I I try to try to stop them. So I appreciate you being here to continue to educate the general population about this work. Um and we'll certainly continue to engage with you moving forward. Again, we just can't thank you enough for your work. I know uh board member Briggs, board member Boozer Struthers were able to give you their thank yous. Uh board member Walker, if you wanna say something, I wanna make sure I extend the same.
Oh, yes, I've thanked you a million times on here. I did it twice. I've talked about four times. Every single time, there was a thank you right at the front. But Dr. Thornton, every time I see you, it's always a pleasure. When we're out in the community, you know, you always, as everyone else said, brings a great um perspective, and so we're excited to be able to have you here. And thank you um so much, and I'm sure my colleagues will be reaching out for sure as we continue on our journey to Educate, Advocate, Act Together. I'm gonna get a tattoo.
And I am always available to support our public school system and our children. Um the school system did so well by my two daughters. So I know what can happen. They're graduates of Central High School. Uh they received an excellent education there. My three grandchildren are in the public school system. Uh and so, you know, that's what drives me, because I know what public education uh can do and is doing for our children.
Thank you so much, Ms. Welsh. Um do you have anything else on this particular item? If not, we're gonna adjourn.
Thank you all.
No, I don't, but to say that I, it was very interesting to listen to Dr. Thornton, and I appreciate listening to the history. I it was, it's very informative for me, so thank you very much. And I absolutely agree. People say to me, why do you, why do you always keep working for public education? I can't think of anything as more important than public education. It's just so important for us, so thank you very much.
Okay, well, the chair would like to remind the public um that the next Virtual Policy and Governance Committee meeting will be on February twenty-fifth um twenty twenty-four. Please continue to check the Prince George's County Board of Education website for meeting information and updates. Thank you all for the great discussion and your attendance today. To our viewers, thank you for watching. There being no further business, uh the time is now three twenty-four, and the February sixth, twenty twenty-five Special Policy and Governance Committee meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you.